We'll go ahead and get started. I want to thank Councilors Allen and Govan as part of the Finance Subcommittee and Councilor Hurst, thank you for joining us as well. And everyone from the Finance Team, can you just introduce yourselves? I think I know everybody except one person in the blue shirt.
All right, I'll start and then we'll go around to TJ Plant, Caffo, Chris Caputo, Treasurer Collector.
Pat Burns, Controller.
Kira Hamlin, Budget Analyst.
And Melanie?
Melanie A. Kobe, Budget Director.
Thank you. So Tim, you have the floor.
All right, Tracy, thank you. So we all know the pension problem that we're facing, you know, worse than the state and all that. We've been talking about that for long enough. And there's the concept of using pension obligation. We've always figured like, what are we going to do to deal with this? And what what has happened so far is that we just haven't an increase in our payment every year relatively lately it's been nine percent. So the thought the thought is kind of like, when is that going to end or how long can we deal with that? Because the payments eventually could get kind of unreachable or undoable. So there's a concept of pension obligation bonds, which is basically simply that you bond, you pay all your most of your pension at once. You bond for the money and then after that, if we agree to do it, obviously it's a major decision to do it, then we would have level payments for for quite a few years. But we would be able to more more consistently budget, knowing what our pension payment is going to be. Rather than thinking it's, you know, eighty eighty thousand times nine percent, times nine percent again, times nine percent again. So TJ has started. You guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right. TJ has started a committee, you know, before I got on it, I've been on it a couple of months. But the other people in the room, most of them are on the committee as well as some outside people to really look at the viability of doing this. It's a major decision to do it. And so today in this meeting, he asked if we could, you know, just come and discuss it. We meet every Wednesday at one and there's several people from outside firms at that, from investment firms, et cetera. So the only precursor to this, other than what I said, is that TJ gave a, you know, a couple of months ago, he gave us a high level of of this whole process. And now we're at the point where we've been into it, you know, three quarters of the way maybe or something. And now it's time to give an update and tell see what we've learned. So I'm in the meetings. It's been great to be part of the committee. Nice to have the City Council be part of it, so I can kind of advocate for it and answer questions, some questions that you guys will have. So with that, TJ, let's turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, so as Tim mentioned, I'm going to try to share my screen with the presentation just to update. We've been at this since, in earnest since January, meeting weekly, sometimes twice a week, in order to keep the pressure on trying to determine whether or not we will be able to continue or continue to push forward and getting ready to make what's known as the go no-go decision right up until the day of the sale. And we're so we're really have a lot of work that has been done and we have to do to beat the market for they raise interest rates to a level that doesn't make sense for us or the market starts to go to go down. So I'll go through this quickly, but I really the big thing is I'm going to be before the City Council in the next week or two, asking for an authorization of seven hundred and fifty-five up to seven hundred and fifty-five million for pension obligation bonds. Now that is is going to be a request that if we don't do it, we will just ask the City Council to rescind it. If we do it in an amount less than seven hundred and fifty-five million, we that's okay. We'll rescind any unauthorized, but that is just so we can keep the pressure on to get to the market in a way that makes sense. And I'll get into all the math and everything else that you really just stop me, slow me down, ask questions. This is more for for the benefit of everyone to truly understand what it is we're looking to do, because it is a tremendous opportunity, but it's not without risk. I know we went through that the last time, but. So we'll go through the, we went through the benefits, we went through the risks, and I'll go through those pretty quickly. We have an unfunded liability, this is the worst in the Commonwealth, perhaps the nation. You know, the idea is we do a pension obligation, then we pay all that money into the system, so we're quote unquote fully funded. And then we pay for the debt service. This is how it exists today. If we did nothing, this is how unsustainable it can become. Here, well, you'll see we're doing nine point two percent increases every year, but you'll see in twenty twenty.
Did you just explain each column, TJ?
Yeah, so the the normal cost column is the cost that that we would have, will have to pay no matter what, even if we do pension obligations. This is just the cost of paying for our retirees. What the unfunded actual liability, also, column, what's that, three, thirty, three, eight, CD?
That is if a member was part of the Springfield Retirement System for thirty years and they left the system and became part of the Holy Elk Retirement System, then we're assessed a payment of their pension based on a percentage of their years of service with Springfield. A lot of the net three eight seat payments we see are for paraprofessionals who then become teachers. So they're in the Springfield Retirement System for several years. And then they they become part of the mass teachers retirement system. So we're assessed a charge for their credible service with the Springfield Retirement System, which carries forward.
So the next two columns are early retirement incentives. This is part of the reason why we are underfunded even more so than other communities. We, in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, we implemented an early retirement incentive that added years of service or years of age to a to a person when they so they retired earlier and younger. This costs us more money than it would. The amortization schedule of our actual liability, that's how much we owe to to cover, to be fully funded on a on a schedule of twenty thirty-four. So the total cost of the appropriation at this year is fiscal twenty-one is seventy-eight million, fiscal twenty-two is eighty-five million, fiscal twenty-three will be ninety-three million. So as you see, these numbers get a little daunting out in these out years. And there's other stuff we can do, just without issuing pension debt, we can extend the schedule, there's other things we can do. But this is an aggressive way to go after trying to, you know, show we're committed to funding our debt. This is a snapshot of.
Can I stop you one minute? There's a phone number, nine seven eight eight five.
Patrick Roach.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, so this is a snapshot of where we are. We have four hundred and fifteen million in market value, almost four hundred and sixteen million. Our twenty twenty return was twelve point seven percent. Annualized from two thousand eleven to twenty twenty was nine point one and eighty-five to twenty twenty, eight point six two. That is significant, because that's the type of returns we're going to want to see to make this whole investment work. This is just showing the difference if we issued a POM debt service versus the amortization schedules in blue and the savings we would we would get if we did a debt service payment instead of the amortization schedule. While we're looking at them, the low rates, even though they're increasing, we still have the ability to sell taxable debt at a rate that may make sense. We're going to have the savings. Everything about this deal is timing, market. What we're trying to do to make sure that we're we're hitting the market at the right time. And then if we and we have to hedge our bets by creating a mitigation plan. Benefits, now we'll better fund our pension fund, we'll have budgetary relief, we'll still have substantial savings. If the investments return the way we just saw them.
Get her snacks.
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, POMs, there is no flexibility. Once you issue POMs, you owe that debt service. So there's nothing you can do except to pay it to your bond rated bondholders. Credit credit agencies are coming around to it. This is just the rating, what they think right now. Right now, the last two to issue were Quincy.
Can you go back to what the rating agencies think right now?
Yeah. So S and P, they're actually, they commented on our last bond issuance, when they did they did a surveillance rating on us for our bond issuance that they'll take a wait and see approach that it could be very beneficial to the city, but understand the risk. Fitch, we don't get rated by Fitch, but you know, they have kind of an agnostic view of POMs. It really comes down to what is the community trying to do? And does it make sense? And if we can tell our story? Or I can email, Councilor, I can email this to everyone as well.
I think Lindsay just did.
That was a memo explaining, updating everything I'm telling you now in a memo format. I'm trying to kill you guys with information. So where we are from the last meeting, we had an initial meeting with A and F and D O R and told them where we're going. They're keeping a close eye on us, knowing what timing is of the essence. We've updated our actuarial study to to look at, you know, the it's the baseline and trying to look at all this, all the scenarios that we need to look at. And I'll show you a couple just to kind of put it in perspective. We received twelve proposals for underwriters. And the underwriters are the ones that actually are going to sell these seven hundred and fifty million dollar other bonds. So they're going to find companies and others to buy it. The Underwriter Syndicate is what it's known as, is Stifel, is the senior lead. And Ramirez and Company is the co-lead. Those two have a seat at the table every week with our Bond Counsel and Financial Advisor to help make sure that we're we're looking at the market and understanding what's happening in the market. So Stifel's experts and Ramirez's experts are are advisors and try to help us make sure that we can sell for rates that make sense for the city. And if they can't sell a raise that makes sense for the city, we pull the plug on the whole thing. Nobody gets paid except for the actuary who's doing all of our actuarial analysis. I'll show you one of them. Everyone else, they only get paid if you sell. And then we're developing a plan of finance and a risk analysis that we need to do for A and F. Here's A and F guidance. They can they can squash this even if we wanted to do it. They can squash this at any point, but they think it's too risky. And so we need a two-thirds vote by the City Council. We need two nationally recognized rating agencies. Right now, we know we're going to go to Standard and Poor's and we think we're going to try a new company called Kroll that we've knew to us, but not new to the business. And then we got to look at the difference of the investment rate of return against what we're borrowing. It's going to be at least two and a half percent. So what does that mean? In my mind, we will need to sell taxable debt for four and a quarter with with a return on investment of six point seven five assumed rate of return. If it's higher than that, I do not think A and F will approve it. The risk mitigation, they're requiring us to set up a sizable reserve to hedge against market fluctuations and market corrections. They say roughly ten percent, so that'd be roughly seventy-five million set aside just to deal with paying back our pension bonds if the scenario play out quite as well. And then, you know, understanding the risk is you got to watch the market for the return rate of returns. The rate of returns over twenty years have been extremely high, up to twenty percent. Making sure that our investments, they're with the state at print, so we don't have to, we don't have to make those those investment decisions. And then we're, you know, looking at other, I we asked like six different scenarios or more to make sure we're looking at everything. All right, so this is the first scenario we call baseline. And this is where we're basing everything off of this as we ask for more scenarios to match what we think could happen in the market and to help make these decisions. And so what I'll go through it again, just so, column A is the normal cost we talked about. Column B is the UAL payment. Then we're issuing seven hundred and forty-seven million. We're going to update that to seven fifty-five. Just a level payment for the next till twenty forty, what that looks like. And then the adding up A, B, C, D from the forty-one million total payment. So that's if the POMs issued, if the POMs not issued, we have the normal cost plus seventy-eight million dollars worth of unfunded actual liability plus these three columns added, or F and G added together for twelve ninety-three million. They're assuming annual turn is seven percent. We know Parx is going to head us that way. On our modeling, we're actually looking to ultimately do six point seven five percent. Maybe seven percent, but that seems really high compared to what other communities were assume are we're assuming to mitigate the risk of issuing POMs. So this is the baseline. This is the that starts everything. And then just to show you, we're looking at everything. Again, this is just an example. This is the worst case scenario. We had our actuary go in and actually mirror what happened in two thousand and eight, when the financial bottom fell out of the market. And you'll see on the far right here, annual return is assuming zero return, twenty-five percent mark drop in the market, ten percent drop, and then just stays a slow, ugly recovery. And whoop, sorry, and that's that's kind of that so that's actually, we have our baseline, we have our worst case scenario, and now we have probably fifteen scenarios in between that we're going to map out between now and the time we make the decision. You'll see this would lose us two hundred and two million. So there's another line down there on this one that actually says that you don't see it, didn't come up on it. That is a really just a a net loss of seventy million. That's why it'd be important to have the stabilization reserve set up for the for this explicit purpose. Next steps, we're going to be asking the City Council to vote on authorizing pension obligation bonds. We're going to go get the two rating ratings. We're going to do a plan of finance and get that over to A and F, get them to sign off. If they do, we sit or we sit down around the day of and see the market, if the market looks like it's going to sell and get us to where we need to be. We move forward. If not, we pull the plug and then we price, invest, and set up this reserve. And that is everything in a nutshell.
TJ, can you pull back up the presentation and go to the screen right before next steps?
The worst case scenario one?
This one? Yeah, yeah, yes. And can you show me the baseline first and then worst case scenario?
So this is I'm sorry. So this is the baseline. This is kind of where it's scotch to say, does this make sense for the city? And we start, this is where we start saying, okay, if I don't do anything, I'm going to have to pay eighty-seven million dollars in twenty twenty-six as opposed to sixty million if I issue debt and I'm locked in at sixty point three.
And that's if the market stays good, which doesn't look like it's trending that way, but can you go to worst case scenario now and look at twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six, it's eighty-five million currently, or excuse me, a hundred and one million as opposed to sixty million. But when you start getting into these years where there's losses, that's where this is where it would be problematic. So if this doomsday scenario came came to fruition, we would need to, sorry, we would need to have a reserve to hedge against this.
Because it looks like you're comparing two different lines, because it says total payment on the POM not issued. And then you were looking at the sixty million, but why not the total total payment line?
Yeah, I don't know. It would be, I'm sorry. It would be the total payment. I misspoke.
So twenty twenty-six, if we did it the regular way, we'll be paying a hundred and one.
Hundred and one point three.
And then ninety-six, if we issue the POM.
Correct.
Okay, and then go back to the other one again. I'm just trying to look at these lines. So then ninety million and then eighty-seven million if we don't issue it. So we don't really see the savings until twen- twenty twenty-eight?
So we'll we'll have immediate budgetary, see the top line at fifty-one point nine, fifty-one point two million. That'll be year one saving, budgetary savings.
Tracy, they're saving right away. Our payment becomes roughly sixty million dollars a year.
Oh, okay, so fifty-one million dollars savings next next fiscal year.
Yeah, so the reason this is going down is not the apples to apples that Pat was just telling me was that this pushes out the payment schedule to twenty forty. And our current schedule is not till twenty forty. It's twenty thirty-four, right?
Twenty thirty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three. So this was, so yeah, so that's, this is assuming this is pushing it out. So there would be budgetary, so if we don't do anything and we just don't issue POMs and we extend the schedule, we will see some some budgetary savings.
But we're paying longer overtime.
We're modeling that now. Yeah, we're taking, we're looking at that model right now.
Yeah, you're you're pushing the payments towards the end if you reduce the appropriation now, which the state regulatory agency, PARAC, they wouldn't approve that anyways. So this is they would want us to stay at least at that ninety-three million and cut the years down.
Yes, confusing.
That's why we're having a meeting early.
Right, and I'll do this, I'll do this again next week, or not next week, I'm gone, but I'll do it again.
You're on vacation, TJ.
I am, I'm going to be in Denver.
Okay, so how come we're not showing this to twenty thirty-three?
This was just two two examples we threw in the presentation. I absolutely can and will show you that that document for that stuff. This was just to show we're running every scenario to show that what we're thinking and everything else, so.
Based on this scenario, even if the years are pushed out, we we based on this projection, we're looking to save two hundred and eighty-six million, two hundred and eighty-seven million.
Correct. Correct.
All right, does my colleagues have questions? Because I got to look at this offline, just a lot of information.
If I could just say something, being someone who's been involved in it, it's really, it's complicated, it's a little risky. And we you really need to take the time to understand it. So that's why we're having this committee meeting today, so we can you have it a couple of weeks. We were talking about maybe scheduling the council vote around two weeks from now. It's not scheduled yet, but around that time. So that's why this meeting is being held, because there's a lot to chew on here. And it's this is, I've been on the council thirteen years. I don't remember any financial vote that's of the of the importance of this, of the, you know, the scale of this. So I think it's a great idea, but there everybody needs to understand what they're voting on, because as Pat or somebody told me, when you have pension payment, you can kind of not pay it if you don't want to. I mean, that's obviously a bad thing to do, but it's a little bit, there's a little discretion. If we wanted to pay a little less in our pension payment, we could, it would hurt us down the road. But when it's a debt service payment, didn't you guys say that you have to pay it? It just is like the first thing you pay in the year, right?
Yes, the first thing we owe is our bondholders before you even make payroll, so.
So so even though this is making our annual payment less, you know, sixty million in this scenario, sixty million a year, it it's a sixty million that we cannot, we have no discretion with. We have to pay it or or we have to somehow figure out how we're going to pay it, even if it means, you know, in a worse scenario layoffs and things like that. So this is a massive, thi- this is the thing that's been kind of an albatross around our collar for for a while. This is a way out, but it's not free. It's a, you know, if it works out with the interest rates, it's great. We'll have more annually, have more money to allocate to other things, et cetera. But it it really needs to be understood by the Finance Committee. That's why we're here. I told Marcus about this meeting. He agreed that this was the place to start. But obviously, everybody in the council, Finance Committee and otherwise, needs to really understand this.
Yeah, and I know we got questions from councils, but I just had a couple more. So what are we, we currently bud- budget for the pension obligation now, right, TJ?
Yeah, so we budget the payment to the retirement system annually. That's going up nine, roughly nine percent every year.
So what was it in FY twenty-two?
Do you remember that off the top of your head?
Was it fifty, was it fifty-seven or something?
Eighty-five point two million. I'll pull it up on the screen again.
But but that includes the housing, you know, S H Springfield Housing Authority. And I think the city part was fifty-seven. Around there.
But this, does does this include housing and all that or that's separate?
We we pulled them out of the calculation, so this overall amount, I believe, does on this screen.
That's everyone.
That's everyone, all the units. And we pull that, we pull them out of the POM analysis and and we're pulling and the school department pays a portion for their non-teacher retirees and we pay for everybody else.
So when I look at that total cost column?
That's everybody.
That's everybody. But on the.
Authority and Water and Sewer as well.
Thousand three hundred, but on the other screen.
No, that's just seven fifty-five or will be seven fifty. So all these numbers are going to fluctuate. I don't want to get married to any number. Because we're going to be changing all, and I'll explain it all when we change in assumptions. So we're going to be changing this assumption in the right hand corner from seven down to probably six point seven five. Column C, the seven forty-seven, may end up being seven fifty-five. You know, that's why, you know, because this is seven forty-seven, because it's going to cost three million dollars to issue this debt, roughly.
And where does the seventy-five extra million, where 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 is that coming from? You're just going to add it to the budget?
So what we'll do is take the fifty million dollars in savings and then just set up a payment plan, for lack of a better word, where we put ten percent of free cash into it to get it up to where it needs to be. But A and A and F will, like, the key part is A and F will not say yes to us if we don't have the fiscal discipline to cede the money to the stabilization fund. And that's why it's important that we have all these conversations and I will attend any meetings anyone wants between now and we ask for the vote. You're going to feel like we're rushing it. I don't want you to feel that way, because I I think we should do a vote as early as April twenty-fifth to authorize it. That doesn't mean we're doing it. It just gets it authorized. So then I can come back and have the whole team be on the call with the council to go through their, to provide their level of expertise for all of us.
Well, I want a separate individual meeting.
For anyone, anyone that wants it. Tim's not understating it. This is a serious decision that needs to be made and weighed and discussed. And there needs to be a hundred percent honesty and trust that the reason we're doing it are, you know, to save the pension system, but that this is, I know, I this is just one of those, we just, we're all going to be rowing in the same direction to make this happen before rates increase to a point where it's untenable.
Okay, thank you, TJ. Councilman Letterman?
I think Councilor Govan was before me, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I seen your hand first. So Councilor Govan, thank you, Councilman Letterman.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation. So TJ, so these numbers are all based on the market, correct?
Correct. It's our best thinking as of right now and that we're Correct, it's our best thinking as of right now, and that we're gonna keep modeling. Uh, as the market changes, we, we update these models, uh, almost daily at this rate.
Right, so from what I know about the market, which is not a lot at all, um, I know that you're supposed to. Buy low and sell high, right? So are we thinking about, of course, you know, getting into it when it's low and then hoping that it will increase? So with that said, when does the decision have to be made? Or do you know?
The decision, we wanna make the decision, um, we wanna make the decision basically. Uh, mid-May, the latest. Uh, the feds are meeting again, May fourth, May fourth, and we think they're gonna raise rates. Uh, fifty basis points or half percent. And what we're being told by our advisors is that. The market already knows this and has anticipated that, so the rates we're seeing. Um, are still favorable for us to do this. Where they called it a free look at the market is what we're doing right now, uh, because. Uh, Brockin sold for two point six percent, I would kill to have that, uh, right now. Right now, they're modeling around three point six percent. And what, that's why they're four and a quarter in my mind, and I don't, the group can correct me if they disagree, is, is our, is our. Walkaway point, if it gets too high beyond that.
Okay, and one more thing, um, how are we preparing, uh? That with the pension, um, plan that we have for the city for the future, are we preparing for that, so that we should make sure this doesn't happen again?
So, yes, so we definitely, we need to make sure that we have the fiscal discipline and make the right decisions. Uh, for the plan and for the retirees to ensure that we're. Can I say this, we won't slip backwards if the market tanks, no, they're still gonna lose value, but we boost value if the market takes right now. Even doing nothing. Um, so. As long, as long as I'm here, I'll advise it to make the appropriate decisions, but I can't judge decisions made in the past because I wasn't in the seat. It's really tough to balance budgets when. Uh, you don't have the revenue there, and early retirements are a good thing to kind of save money in, in the short term, but they cost us a lot of money in the long term. So I don't, I don't judge prior decisions, uh, I just know we would have to have conversations like these when. Uh, you know, the retirement board, uh. You know, they would make sure that we're having this conversation, cause they ultimately have the authority to, to force the city into a number, uh, to pay, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor, Council Letterman.
Uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair, and, uh, I came in a couple of minutes later, I was coming off another meeting, so I do apologize, I, I just wanna make sure that I. Uh, am, am fully wrapping my head around it. So, to, to put it in the simplest terms, right, we have a pension fund, the pension fund is invested through the state. We make a, a payment every year on that pension fund. That includes the payment we need to make because of the increases in it, and then the unfunded payment, right? That's what we do right now.
Correct.
Okay, so what we're essentially talking about doing is borrowing a large sum of money to fund the unfunded portion.
Correct.
And then we would still pay our normal contribution and the debt service on the borrowed money.
Correct.
And the reason that that is reasonable to do right now might be because of the low interest rates and the state of the market.
Correct, so interest rates, we sell at four. And we return at seven, seven, eight, nine, ten percent like this slide does. I mean, uh. Nine point one six percent from two thousand eleven to twenty twenty, that's a, that's a damn good percent.
A- a- and we, we have, we, we know what the projection is right now, if we do nothing, right, and we're gonna continue to see tens of millions of dollars in increases every year that we have to pay.
Correct.
Um, that, that's eaten into our budget and into our, our, um, our total, uh, operating budget. But if we issue this debt. And then the market completely nose dives, I know you didn't anal-, you were doing analysis on that when I came in. So what's, i- is the downside there that then our pension payments are going up anyways, and we have to pay the debt service?
You'll be paying twice, if it goes back up or it tanks, you'll be paying. If you started creating a, an unfunded actual liability, plus the debt service, you're paying twice.
Okay. I think, you know, I, I was doing a little bit of reading on this before the meeting, and it seemed like, I mean, people could kind of went a lot of different directions on it, but. One of the things that people said was, they were looking at cities that were doing it in terms of. Uh, what their current practices were, so, I mean, how, how, how are our current practices being viewed in terms of. Uh, what we're doing to, to meet the, the fund going forward?
So we have a very aggressive schedule that, uh, we are going up, as you see, nine point two percent. Uh, we have funded it now through twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty thirty-three, excuse me. Um, and that's very aggressive, so, um, moving it up a few years to the twenty forty, which is statutory deadline. Um, so, right now, there's speculation that the twenty forty deadline may end up moving, but we don't know and can't bank on that. So twenty forty is the, is the li- last year, they have us fully funded. But every three years, um, we get out to a, a schedule. That we negotiate and work with, uh, the retirement board and PARAC. To make sure we're meeting our obligations.
Okay, so the last question is just, i- if we move forward with it. And it was going smoothly, as I imagine at least it would do for the coming fiscal year. What, what would be the savings after we pay our, pay our debt service, pay our normal amount? And pay the reserve fund that's necessary to, uh, satisfy the state regulators?
Uh, so that, year one savings is the, where the fiscal discipline comes in, that's that fifty something million.
So it would drop our payment fifty million in the first year?
Yes.
What about year two?
Although this, not this model, but we'll be modeling another model that, um, might show, uh, other drops, and so. All this. Here in column D.
Yeah.
Is subject to change based upon assumptions and affordability, so if we have stated goals in the budget. We can structure this. As a way, so instead of being sixty million payment, you know, we can make it, you know. Higher or lower based on what our budget and what our strategy would be, that budgetary savings.
Right. Okay, uh, well, we'll talk more, but thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Council Letterman, um, are there any other questions from counselors? Because I'm a little lost.
Trust me, I've been, I only know more about it because I've been staring at it every day for months and months now, so. Uh, my, my job is to get you to a level of comfort of where we're trying to go. And, uh, having Tim on the committee has been excellent, and hopefully he can serve as an ambassador to the council of the process we're undertaking on this.
All right, so, um, I would like to look at it. And then formulate some questions from reviewing it, um. Talk to, I could even talk to Pat and Lindsay, TJ, if you're.
Yeah, I'm out, I'm out, but honestly, it's in the interest of time, you have access as an entire team. Uh, to ask questions and generate questions, and we want you to, and if we can't answer them, we'll get the experts to answer them.
All right, yeah, I think it'd be easier to, um, kind of like dissect it. And then come back with questions, cause it just seemed like a lot, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so we could commit to showing you the other models, uh, as we, as we get them back. Uh, I can ask our actuary to get us a model, um, sooner or than later, that. What I, what I need now is I get the baseline, and now the baseline's seven percent, I know seven percent's not what I'm gonna assume, it's gonna be six, seven, five. So I need that to be fixed, and I know the amount's not gonna be seven forty-seven, it's gonna be seven fifty or seven fifty-five. Um, so I need to get that fixed, and then every other, uh, scenario in between.
All right, that sounds good, um, and I encourage counselors to set up individual meetings too, and then we'll definitely have another finance committee meeting. Um, to.
Yeah, happy to sit down, like I said, anyone that wants, we're happy to sit down, we know, we know it's complicated.
Yeah, um, Tim, Council Alan?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, uh, Madam Chair, um. Just, it sounds like we're heading towards closing, I just wanna make a couple more comments, um. One is, I'm, as I said before, it's a massive decision, it's a massive move to make. Uh, but the reason it's being considered is because we're in financial jeopardy if we keep on this nine percent. Um, path where eventually the, the annual payment might be beyond what we can pay. And, um, so it's kind of a fiscally responsible thing to do, to look at all the options, and this is a scary option. But it's a great option if we make it work, because all of a sudden we have level payments. And, um, you know, theoretically, you know, our, our pension funds. Zida, you may not know this, they're, they're all invested by a state investment agency, but we don't invest them on ourselves. And the, and the, um, you know, the rate is somewhere around seven percent that, that kind of the guaranteed, it's not guaranteed, but it's the. It's a rate at which they plan, when they figure out how much do we have to put in, they figure how much, what you have in there. How much is it gonna grow, and that's the number, um, of seven percent roughly. So I mean, I just, I think, you know, um, it, it's massive time for us to really just. Uh, explore it as much as you can, trust everybody, everybody in that room is trying to figure out. How to make our financial picture more tenable, uh, we're doing great financially right now, but. You know, in two years, that payment will be twenty million more than it is now, and, um, so we've gotta do something. It's responsible, uh, for TJ and his team to, to, to look at this. This isn't, you have to get approval from the state to even consider doing this, there's only a few. Uh, municipalities that are allowed to even consider doing this, so we're in that group, and I just say. Um, you know, just sit down with people, talk with them, whatever, uh, and go through it, so you're comfortable with it, I mean, I mean, I'm not totally comfortable with it. But I'm, I hear about it every week, and it, it sinks, sinks in a little bit more with, with each passing week, but this is a massive vote. And, um, to, basically, we were saying, we're gonna put the city in seven hundred fifty million more dollars of debt. And then we have, but we won't have an unfunded pension liability that's at all like it is now. So it's not like we owe more money, it's just that we're agreeing to pay this money level over time, and it's kind of risky to do that. So, but I, I applaud the financial team, the finance team, I, I, I have great trust in them, I see how they operate in that. Uh, in that weekly meeting with these outside banks and actuaries and et cetera, um, so. This is one that, that if you're gonna spend a little extra time on, on something on the council, this is one that I would request that everybody spend a little more. Time on, because, uh, when you vote yes that night, if you vote yes, uh, you're voting on a lot of stuff right there.
Yeah, I think it's great work, thank you, Council Alan, for representing the council, um, on the committee. Um, what's scary to me is if, if we go into a recession. Like, we still have to pay this regardless, whereas. Um, if we go into recession and we're putting nine percent, nine point two, we can reduce that amount and pay a little bit less, I think that's what. Um, scares me the most. You know, I lived through some of this before, and, and it is very scary. Um, and you know, everyone hates layoffs and things like that, so, um, I think that is what. Troubles me the most, but I do like that we're looking at, um, other ways and not be last, I didn't like that. I was like, what? We're where? I like to be on the winning team, I, I, you know, I'll even take fourth place, but goodness gracious, like. Laugh, anyways, um, just really applaud you guys for even looking at different solutions and options to, um, better fund our pension. Because, you know, people who work for the government, for the city, really deserves it, and, um. We all have to figure it out one way or the other, so thank you for all the hard work and all the meetings since January. Um, but I'm definitely gonna reach out while you're on vacation, TJ, just to let you know.
Yeah, definitely.
Pat and Lindsay and Chris, and I forgot blue shirt lady's name. Um, and Melody, you guys will be hearing from me. Um, to just get better understanding, I just kind of wanted to like look at the presentation myself and, and see.
Might as well just go through it, flag all your questions, and then reach out to Pat and Lindsay and Chris.
Okay. Alrighty, any other questions from counselors?
I, I, I just wanna thank the counselors on here, the, you know, Zida and you, Tracy and Jesse, and I don't know if I missed anybody else. For.
Austin and Mike were on too.
All right, Justin and Mike, yeah, this is important for, I'm glad everybody's digging in on it, that's great.
Yeah, cause the more we can explain it and, and understand it, I think is better, um, for the council and to be able to like. You know, lobby for it, so to speak, um, if we understand it, so please, everyone. You know, if you don't understand something, make sure you reach out, um, to the finance team and get your own understanding, cause mine, of course, is gonna be different. Than someone else's, um, and the, um, Council Govan and Letterman, you both asked some excellent questions, so I appreciate those, cause. I didn't even consider the questions that you asked, so thank you for that. And since no one else has any more questions, TJ, you have a final comment?
No, just gonna thank everybody for their time, and we're here to help.
All right, thank you, thank you, talking soon, have a great vacation.
All right, bye, everyone.
All right.
Thanks, everybody, yeah, good job, thanks, everybody.